Call meeting in order, please stand for W. E. D. J.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Minutes at the previous meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have motion and second to approve minutes. Any additions or corrections? No, up here, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, will you approve?
Second.
We have motion and second. Do we have any additions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, need further approval? Twenty eighteen's border appraisals.
This is our large list. I had Beth go through. Gave me pictures of which ones has structures, houses, that's everything. That's the ones that have structures. We tried to put the appraisal value, you know, according to, I mean, I don't know.
Which one do you want?
It's just, yeah, Beth gave me pictures of everything that has structures like that.
Little small town with no structure, right?
I know a few of them that if they don't get paid, that there are going to be people that are gonna come in and buy them.
Okay.
And tear them down because it's like right next to their property. Want to come. But, other than that, I haven't, you know.
We'll make sure we thank those people.
Yeah, because it's, they just said it's rat infested and this. And I think the one is in Rocket, where the old car used to be.
Oh.
Yeah. Yep.
Is this one in Devil's Lake, that's still the one behind Golden Point something, right?
For the sixteen thousand, yeah, the one that we've had to tear down.
Yeah, it'd be a lot, you know.
Yep. So we're, yep.
That was gonna be my one question on the list, is we talked about in the past that we couldn't get sixteen thousand dollars for the property. Would it be reasonable to drop that price even though we've got some money into it so we can get it sold, so it's not just sitting there? Because that was the one thing we had discussed in the past that we're calling, you know.
Hold on, I think I'm.
I recoup myself from any discussion there. Money go hard.
Well, I guess in my view, it might make sense seeing as I am of the opinion that if anybody was gonna buy it for sixteen thousand, they would've done so by this point. I mean, I don't know that we need to go way way down. Maybe we just little bit price a step at a time and see if somebody buys it so we can probably recoup most of the investment, that'd be my opinion. But, then again, if somebody who's, you know, heard me say that, they might wait another year and see what goes down to them.
We never put these on bid, huh? We never bid on, or don't do it?
No, that's the third Tuesday. I mean, so there's still a chance for some to come in and pay, but.
That's one we've never gotten bids on, correct?
No. No, minimum bid would be this sixteen thousand, is what we have it set at now.
I mean, we've had people call with interest, but because of the size of the lot, like you can't build a house, you can't. And I think someone adjacent to it wanted to buy it, but they didn't want to pay that.
I just brought it up, I know it was a discussion we had in the past, so.
And that would be the time to, make an adjustment if you wanted.
We gotta put a minimum bid on things, right? And everybody, we usually use a crazy old, that would be.
I mean, the only reason why that's sixteen thousand is because it costs us fifteen to be cared down. We just tried to recoup that.
Yeah, the specials were the fifteen, three nineteen, that was the cost of the demolition and the abatement of asbestos.
But if you can get it sold for ten and start taxing, it might seem faster than.
That's my fault.
No, it was fifteen.
It was at fifteen, we're eighteen. That was the actual cost of that fifteen, so. It's, it is what it is, I guess.
Does mean, if we were to lower it, is there any number that strikes any of my fellow commissioners as being reasonable?
I guess I don't have a preference. I don't know. I guess. Pictures of some reasons for there?
Well, I'd say if we dropped it to something like eight thousand, right, you couldn't necessarily buy the lot next to your neighbor. You know, if your neighbor owned the lot next to you and you wanted to buy from him, probably couldn't get it to less than that anyway, right?
I mean, I don't know if you wanna cut it in half, or you wanna go to twelve, or you wanna step it down, or I don't know. I, like I said, just brought it up.
I have these strong feelings about it too, it's just that.
Well, we, I'm just saying, it's been sitting out there for a year at that sixteen thousand. And we haven't gotten any interest in it. I don't wanna, I wanna try to recoup as many costs as we can, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a lot just sitting there.
But, I mean, can, I mean, the question is, is can you imagine a person who wouldn't buy it at sixteen, who would suddenly buy it at twelve? Maybe, I don't know.
Never know.
I'd go a little bit higher, maybe get more, two people anymore, you know.
It's up to you. I can't make a motion.
Well, I'll split the difference with you, and I'll make a motion that we lower the price on the minimum bid for Ramsey County house report, I don't wanna read the law description, move it to ten thousand dollars.
Okay. We have a motion to raise or to lower the minimum bid.
I'll second that.
Yeah, that won't save the whole description, because we know what we're talking about, there's a lot of numbers there on the first of year. Okay, we have a motion and second to raise to lower the minimum bid to ten thousand, to try to, try to get through. Further discussion or not, motion? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, then we will have to approve the list as presented as well.
Can I make that motion? Second.
Okay. We have a motion to approve the list as presented, with the change to the one. Motion and second, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries and the appraisals will approve. Okay, review. Kevin's letter on what's going on with the highway department. I guess I can kind of just go over here, I talked with him. Oh, last, he said he'd text him, so. Yeah, he's in Rapid City for the conference. Paul is here to talk about K L J. Strata has asked for an extension on the project instead of incurring overage fees. Would you let, I'll let Paul take the floor on that and explain it to us, so.
Kevin sent out that email on Sunday, um, to the group for, as far as describing it. Okay, I can run through it quick. The contractor said they'd request an extension on the state's Form 104461, as their standard one. They say unseasonable cooler temperatures and not allowed asphalt placement and additional multiple, additional multiple rainy days, and then they wanted to extend it and offer first. But I don't think we can, by, per specification, which is part of their contract, they, I don't think we can really grant that. They basically had all season to complete the project and, you know, took, went to other projects instead of finishing this one on there here, so. One oh eight, one oh eight E six, there's a specification that addresses that, and basically it lists whether days that not covered by the events. Nonexcusable delays are delays that are contractors' full responsibility or delays that contractors or the person or a member, and whether delays not covered by the events listed in section one oh eight oh six, so B four. Excusable non, that's a little bit delays, and those are only floods, tornadoes, earthquakes, and natural disasters, which they didn't have any of those, I mean, there's definitely not safe that they can have an extension based on whether, per completion date contract.
Where are these projects at?
It'd be Military Row, County One, Fourteenth Street Northwest by the elevator, and Walley Drive.
How many miles?
Seven point three, roughly.
They have nothing done?
No.
No, they have, no, they've got two of them, two of the sites totally done. And they're working on the third of the four. They should finish this week here with the weather holds.
What's the six thing, why?
Yeah, right, they're out there, they paid proches today, they can get mainline done because of temperatures, but they got made about fourteen hundred tons out yesterday. They've got about twenty-two hundred tons to go on the mainland on County One, and I have, you know, the full one point three miles on Walley Drive, which, I mean, should only take them a couple of days to finish, or leaving, if the temperatures are there.
We talked about the blasmy, right?
Yeah.
We talked about the fact that they had problems with their plant and putting out enough asphalt. And then we approved the change to the contract with K L J simply because they incurred costs that wasn't initially anticipated. The, the costs on the overage on the end of the contract until now, we could then take and basically use to, you know, pay K L J.
About the forty-six grand?
Those twenty-six, yes. And what is the daily that they're incurring on costs?
One thousand one hundred. For that contract amount and the completion date contract. So that some days, some other day comes from October seventh until then. So if they finish Friday, that'd be, let's look at the nineteenth.
Two miles left?
Twelve days?
Uh, yeah, roughly, sorry. One, two, two and a half.
Did they finish Friday, or how many days late?
Twelve.
Yeah, seven thousand, two, seven thousand two.
Seven thirty days.
They informed that the county commission paid K L J twenty-six grand because of the overrun on time?
Well, that wasn't even.
Were they informed? Were they told that?
Well, that, that isn't really their.
They were never even leaked that information yet.
That's public information, but it's not, that wasn't because of the time extension, that was because it took them, we budgeted eight days of paving.
Right, I understand what you did, yeah, I understand that.
And they had already paved like eight days, and we figured they had six days left still at the rate they were going. So that was to cover that. So beyond that, I mean, we've entered more days than that now that they're in liquidated damages. And that's what that's supposed to cover partially, is the, basically the liquid damages for the D O T contract are for coverage extra period fees for watching the project, basically, and and for impact to drive the public.
What was the end date?
October sixth.
October the second?
Six.
Motion to deny. Okay. Second. We have a motion and a second to deny the time extension to Strata on the paving projects, and it's, further discussion.
So you're of the opinion that we couldn't grant it to them even if we wanted to, correct?
Well, if you do, then you run the risk of having to pay that liquidated damage yourself, which because it's federally funded, partially, and the part that they're working on now is federally funded.
Yeah, and the contract signed through the federal funding says that there's only certain specifications that you can essentially waive liquidated damages, right? And we don't need those protections.
Right, I think it has, I think it's happened in North Dakota where county did have to pay back liquidated damages that they shouldn't have given, you know, that they shouldn't have waived.
How many bids do we have on that project? Remember?
Four, I think, four or five.
We had four?
Between four and six, I don't know.
Were they close, do you remember, Paul?
Yeah, yeah, the next one, the next one higher than that was just slightly higher, and, you know, and there was another one that was pretty close, and another couple that were, one or two that were quite a bit higher.
That's all the questions that I got. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none.
Is this, does delay affect the bill that we'll get from K L J as well?
Not yet. I'm hoping they can get under, with the amendment contract, I'm hoping they can get the final work done, it's just, I don't know, it continues to date, then.
So let's hope to go somewhere else again.
Yeah, no, they're here, they're, they are.
That's why they're behind, though, is because they went and left, went somewhere else.
Yeah, they were gone for two weeks on another project, and then came back, and then that one, when they were back, where we could've maybe gotten it done if the weather helped, but they didn't, you know, that's when we got snow that Friday. Okay, so they took a gamble, and this one probably had lower liquidated damages than ever the project they were working on. So they, you know, had to do what they had to do. But they are making every effort to get it done now, but they're here, so.
Okay, further discussion on the motion to deny the extension. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, as Kevin says in his letter here, we need a motion to sign the maintenance agreement for the federal aid roads.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, sound maintenance agreement, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. And then Kevin says, I contacted C A T O T about inspecting the bridge, self-approach is free, we talked about it at the last meeting, they won't inspect it this fall. We're gonna put some more loads of gravel on the bridge out in Morris, which is reasonable, I looked at it, use a little more. Yeah, the gravel pushed down a little bit after it got driven across, which is to be expected, so they're gonna put a little more gravel up there. And I'll do that after it dries up a little, which is hopefully a time now, because we'd use the gravel.
I haven't been able to, they put the gravel on and they had to put some more on.
Yeah, they had the, they had the initial gravel on, and it was not too bad.
I was there, Dad.
Yeah, just got pushed out, so, yeah. I wasn't surprised they were gonna need some more anyway, so. That's good deal. Okay, any further questions on that? I guess we have to leave this on the ball because it's all I have here. Okay, seeing none, we'll move on. It's not six yet, so we gotta wait. Okay, on to unfinished business then. Basin, basin water stewardship award nomination. We talked about that at the last meeting, dead minus thirty-first?
Thirty-first, correct, if I have a good memory out of it, and if anybody needs any information, we have that on our website, dealbasin.com. Can be an individual, a group, a project, as long as they're within the basin. That award will be handed out the sixth of December at Bismarck at Grand Court or in the annual water convention.
This will be our last time meeting as a commission before that deadline, so I guess, isn't anybody as a commission we think would be worthy to nominate? I guess I can do a lot of fine work, but, a lot of water projects.
Who's on that committee to pick that?
It depends on how many applications we get, but generally what we do is we pick members from our subject committee and our water management plan. And so they, they very work has the time to sit in on it. You know, past few years, it's been like John Rodenbacher from Cavalier County, or Sheff and Tyler County. And then a few from Ron Jordan Ramsey, and then Eddie, and so we usually have a big mix of people that we try to. But the problem is getting an application, getting nominees. Some years we get some, some we don't get any. Yeah, but last year we gave it to Arnie Berg, was the recipient of that for, one, being a county commissioner, and the work that he did during the flooding years in Ramsey County, and then his work as a state water commissioner and seeing the completion of the state outlets. And open the water off the lake, so. And before that, it was Paul Becker, who put in twenty-six years on the Ramsey County Water Board, and three water, three Ramsey Water District, and Kevin Bonham. He did twenty-seven years, right in both Devil's Lake and Grand Forest Herald. It kind of varies all over the place, you know, we've done restoration projects in Tyler County, we've done you know, groups of individuals, the Allos Project from Milwaukee. So, part of our issue in Ramsey County is that we have very little water projects that we're doing because of the moratorium on drains and things like that within our basin. So it's tough to come up with projects, you know, the Kenner Marsh Project was a big one, that was a group of collaboration of landlords and state and federal agencies that brought that into play, but that was years and years ago, that that project came into fruition, so. If you have anything stuck in my office, we can get that application filled out.
Okay.
You know, I think last year we, for, what was it, the Commodore Award, or one of those higher state recognition, we nominated Governor Dollar for that award. And he was selected, but couldn't be in attendance, so they chose somebody else for that. And looking back at people that have received that, the higher awards, that during that water convention, it is people that have been in attendance. So maybe they'll, we can resubmit Governor Dollar's name for for that for this year.
What a good idea. When's the deadline for that?
Uh, it's coming up November, I think.
So we'll probably, we'll be, you know, that would be like that.
See a motion?
No, I, I think.
We'll get the nomination form.
We'll get the nomination form and bring that back.
That'd be a good idea. Okay.
He got the funds done.
Yeah. Something that we were told never would never happen, is what, on the east end?
I heard that, it would nice.
Okay. So if anybody's getting nomination, go that to Joe. Okay, on to new business then. Excuse me. Approval of beer liquor license transfer. I have it in front of me, but. So it's a country club. Yes. We have a motion and a second, that's gonna be moved from the private nonprofit, or it is to the corporate. Okay, further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Approved L E C billing, rent reentry, and half of the engineering expense to this point for the project. So it's eighty-three and change, seventy-nine thirty, and then half of the engineer after this point is ten thousand five, second. Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve paying the bills, in the second, further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Lightfun.
Aye. Motion carries. Approval of O and M billing from the city for the bank for this quarter.
Seventeen thousand, fifteen thirty-eight dollars and six ounce.
Yes, seventeen oh five for six.
Want to approve?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the O and M billing. Okay, further discussion on that.
Did I hear correctly that the, I don't know if everyone was gonna pay for that?
Yes, I was just gonna make mention of that, yes. Senator Haggamp got it included in the water resources bill, which is passed the Senate, and it's on to the president's desk. There's no indication he won't sign it, so if he does, then the core will start picking up, and I can't remember the percentage, I don't know if it's the whole thing, but it's, it's a, like a seventy-five percent or something of the total cost of the O and M on the bank. So that'll save us in the.
Of this bill.
Of this bill. So it'll save us in the neighborhood of forty to fifty thousand a year on the county side, and I think Mayor Johnson said somewhere in the neighborhood of a quarter million or something for the city every year. So it's not nothing. And just so everybody knows, Senator John, or, Senator, Mayor Johnson and I wrote op-ed, just thanking the senator for putting the papers on it, because she worked really diligently to get it done for us, so it's gonna save us some money around here, so that's positive. Okay, motion is to pay the bill. Further discussion?
I'm working on it, Adam.
I didn't do anything. I'm working for Johnson. Okay, seeing no further discussion, roll call, please.
Olson?
Aye.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfun?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, approve N D S U extension service wages. So is this, overage is this, what exactly is this?
That was the decision when they were gonna move people around at their offices.
Oh, so it's just, it's just a cost share, okay.
Yes.
So that would be twenty-eight, 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 which is.
Move to approve.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve paying N D S U extension two thousand twenty-eight dollars and twenty-eight cents for wages, since we've been doing on the highest. Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Wakefield?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Lightfun?
Aye. Motion carries. We have approximately one minute, but we'll get into this real quick here. Discuss executive order by the governor for December twenty-four closing. I don't have it in front of me, it's right here. Would you like to expand upon it? It's just something we thought we'd bring up. The governor sent an executive order to close all branches, executive branches, departments, and offices, so extension will be closed. Correct? On the twenty-fourth, which is a Monday, so it's the day in between. Generally, they're closed the afternoon before the holiday, Christmas holiday, but he's just closing it for the full day, just for.
What are we doing on thirty-third, all day?
Thirty-first?
All day.
So, we're just, we're still, as of now, we're still open on the twenty-fourth. But just so everybody knows, that extension will be closed the full day, I don't know if we wanna do anything else to what we're doing now.
I would make a motion that we follow the governor's.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to follow the governor's executive order and close for an extra day off for employees on Christmas. Go buy some stuff. Okay, further discussion on that. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I'm gonna get myself organized here. Much bigger work. Okay, move back up the agenda to six P M, hearing on the alcohol ordinance. And I guess I will open the hearing. Would you like to talk a bit, or would you?
I can, actually, what it is, is the ordinance that was in effect signed by the commission. November fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, the request was presented to rewrite the ordinance as it was stated to make mandatory the alcohol server training provision for all establishments in the county. My understanding that the city had it mandatory, but not giving it to the licensed facilities. So the request was made, the commission asked me to rewrite it, to make down a mandatory piece of it. I did do that also on page one, and did section three, take S license. That is no longer something that is. That is no longer something that is done, so I took that provision out. Anything that I took out has a line through it. Anything that I added, I had an underline. Page five, section S, and the Sunday alcohol, that alcoholic beverage permit is lined out. And the rest of the changes dealt with making the alcohol server training mandatory.
Can we delete, or did you insert in that just seventy-five days?
I did not. I left that open for the commission to decide.
I know, I know, they did it. That's what the police department requested. Officer Gilbertson is going to be continuing to teach this, this course. He's come to the training trainer and does quite a, quite a really thorough, effective job.
On page nine, the provision that she is talking about here is a blank under section twenty C one, where it talks about having all employees successfully complete alcohol server training course. Training must be completed within blank days of employment. I left that open.
Okay.
I learned it was only seventy-five days.
And that would match the city's criteria.
That would match with the city.
Yeah, and we discussed that when we decided to open this up, but we just never put.
That way we can train the course in the same kind of time cycle.
Okay. So basically, Kerry did a good job of overviewing the changes. Basically, it just crosses out the Sunday permit stuff since the legislature changed that in the seventeen session. Makes the change from going to, going to mandatory server training. We still don't have the days in there where we can go to whatever the commission desires. The one thing that I believe Commissioner Frith brought up before the meeting, just been looking it over, was subsection C under section twenty, the number three, the payoff fees incurred. You guys, the district health unit at this point doesn't charge a fee.
We do not.
So we wouldn't have to charge any fees. Then they don't charge the business a fee either. So if we wanted to leave that in there, I guess we could, just in case you guys ever started charging a fee, but it's not necessary at this point in time, I guess. Other than that, that's, that's the changes, but since the ordinance is open, it's open for any, any comment or discussion at this point in time from the public, or I guess I would take comments from the commission at the same time.
Hi, I'm Louis Klemenski, I'm here from, I mentioned, I work at the Grand Courts. I operate Walleye's Roadhouse, so, B-side town. But I guess just to start from the top, I'd ask, does anybody know what section eight in this pertains to? I, I can't imagine there's anything in it, but, but it's so complicated that they want to be true.
Cash your checks.
Yeah, I just, I've been told that it's old hat, that's just something that.
It's something that probably should be eliminated because social service checks are an issue even on.
That's a.
It's all plastic.
Right, at state or federal, I mean, if someone gets a tax refund worth ten dollars, are we not able to cash them? I mean.
Yeah, I don't know.
I just.
That's just something I read, I didn't know, I thought maybe there was some history somewhere that something happened, or.
I suspect it's from way back when, when certain types of relief to needy type people, families, federal dollars came out, so back in the day you used to get like an AFDC check.
Like a work relief project?
Yep.
You know, you have to remember, most of this document was written in the thirties.
I've.
Dr. Prohibition was, was lifted, so.
I've heard a part of that, but a lot of this hasn't been updated since thirty.
Well, this, this, this actual document was updated in twenty sixteen, but there probably are some things that we, that were in there, that carried over that at that point in time we just didn't question, to be honest. We may, I mean, I'll be, I'll take blame for that, I was on the commission's.
And not so much whether it gets gone or whatnot, I just want to make sure that, right, I don't, I don't think it's even possible more to do something wrong, but we don't check or anything anyways, but section eight would have been the first part of it. Seeing you guys move forward with the alcohol training classes and all of these things, I want to just, I've been there and say that, that, I think that it's a great idea to hold your county, you know, to the same accountability as what, as what the city is and all these classes, the, I gotta get my other two, my other two employees from Walsh County, they took new class there, and I know, except it's been on it, there's another one, should mention on the third year. And that, I just, part of my life, and I've been here a year now, we've probably been three days here, and slowly but surely getting to know the community, and one thing there is, is it's, there's a drinking problem in the city. And I just, I, I travel around a lot, and it just, it seems to be a lot more evidence here than, than, than other places, and I think that really, really starts with them. I'll be interested, I've never been to this class, I hope that, the biggest part as a part here to do these things is to have the tools to know how to properly, any person, and I want to say that most of all of us have been there sometime, we're on a mission, and, you know, we, we want to get drunk, and if somebody tells us we can't, we're not happy. You know, there's that fine line when you call the authorities and all these, and this has, I think, has approached by that. I guess the biggest reason I was here, I was told by, big guy, twenty people, two nor, three lawyers, just to keep my mouth shut, section thirteen, section thirteen.
Fourteen.
Or fourteen, it was fourteen. I, I thought, so you're like, you know what, another's been happening, deep mulch, but I, myself and my family, the laborer, I looked at this piece of paper, and I looked, where was this thing, you know, where, how, how did I miss this before we put so much into this? And when I read through it, I want to think, multiple things, but I want to think especially that it was based off of what had been seen around here in two thousand sixteen and prior to that, I don't, I don't really know. I, my wife and I, way back in the day, we had, we came out just as a volunteer, we helped, like, somehow we, we thought we really loved the place, we thought we loved the building, and a year ago, we were down here for a state softball tournament, and I don't want to live in a building, it's a city, there's such diversity here. And anyways, we, we contacted him, being able to be open, but her and I kind of, we known each other for years, but we grew, loved each other in that crazy little building somehow, and I saw so much potential in it, I mean, be it a diamond rough or whatever, that was never done, never done right, never kept open, never had steady hours, never had steady help, never had any kind of management, never had these things, and it, it certainly just be, you know, what, what if you do this right? You know, what if you, what if you stick, I said, what if you stick to this? And what if you do this thing right? What can it be? You know? And of all the cities around it, there's, there's just a thing about Double Lake that it, that it seems to fit it, there's such cultural diversity around here, and the biggest thing I never realized was. The tourism. The tourism here, the ice fisherman and the regular fishermen. In the years that we've been, in the year that we've been open, we've only had four complaints. The other complaints that keep streaming in is there, there are people, it was Nebraska this week, that we're not open on Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. That's, that's kind of people who've changed about. We've done a, I think a real heck of a job. I had no idea what we were in for, for overcoming adversities and learning, and I think we've done a heck of a job of running a place that's, that's been pretty reputable, that, that did bad to us, I haven't heard it. And I just, I wanted to approach this issue and see what, what we're going to resolve. We're actually just in the process of, we're looking at homes, and one night I think, well, my kids are down here, and then this thing came across, and I went, ooh, I'd rather see what this is, because I, frankly, I think that the city, this city itself has enough plain old bars than, you know, I don't see, I don't see it for us without, without entertainment or whatever. That makes any sense?
No, it makes perfect sense. I'm sorry, I was kind of sidebar.
Oh, no.
No, I, I agree, obviously, we're informed that you are going to be coming in and asking this question or bringing it to our attention, and in all honesty, we'll take another advisement, and we'll have Kerry look into it, and we have to look at old minutes, but I think what was signed at that point in time isn't necessarily what the intention of the commission was, because I went back and looked at the minutes, and the minutes reflect that this is not quite exactly what we had in mind, it was actually changed to allow businesses like your establishment to operate.
And, you know, with that, when I read through things, if anybody could be put in our shoes in the last year to, to do, to run a business like this and to keep it reputable, to keep it fun, and to keep it safe, it is so much more work than I ever thought. I mean, it's, this, this was entered in as a hobby, but her and I had a lot of fun there in the days, we missed it, and it, it hasn't necessarily been as, as fun as it was, but in, in the realm of things, to be able to do it this way, it takes a lot of work and it takes a lot of dedication, and the one thing is, and I can say even us as a place, but I think if you were going to have this kind of entertainment, there should be a set of ethics and a set of standards that are set, no matter what, I, I have absolutely no problem with that, because when, when we first opened this thing, you're in, of course, if there are not rules, and if those things are not held, it's, it is something that you don't, you know, so, you know, I'm, I'm, I want to take that inspiration, whatever, whatever it might be, I think it's, it's one little fairytale, but I think it's a big thing in the city. I see so many people come in, we're getting ten, ten, twenty, thirty new faces that, that I've never seen around here, and they're driving from Grand Courts, they're coming from Linden, they're coming from, especially out in the Williston area and that. They're coming here, they're coming here to drink, they're coming here for a show, but then they spend the night to come and get gas the next day, it's, I, I had never dreamt it was going to be this big. I thought it was just going to be some little hobby, I asked, I said, if we can have twenty people in there, I'll be so happy, you know, this will be neat, and it's, it's way more than that. You know, if you guys want to take it under a vitamin, if you want to get in contact with us, see what, what you want to draw.
Okay.
And sir, if I could, what, what's your relationship with the, with the establishment?
Um, I, I operated for Wally.
We've known Wally for about seven years now. He has the construction stuff, we just decided to help him out and work under commission, so.
I just want to mention one thing for you guys, can mention here already is that, I'm sure this wouldn't, this won't pass. Certainly contact your insurance company, your business insurer, and maybe it's some kind of a thing. Because class doesn't always happen to get something. It's a little extra too for being responsible and having your docs in the.
No, it's, I did, I think it's very important.
Okay. Okay, further discussion on the whole ordinance, and specifically the changes in the ordinance.
Cause I have a question on, under G, just making sure that you guys are okay, I, we.
Which, which section?
Under the training, the responsible server training, and just all responsible, all server trains to be provided, under this ordinance shall receive prior approval by the Lake Region District Health Unit. Now, so the city does allow some outside training, and if employees come in, like you've mentioned Walsh County, you know, depending on who does the training, if it would be accepted, if we have someone move here from Fargo that wants to work, do they have to go back to another four-hour class, if they just got trained six months ago, or is that going to be?
Has to be a class, it's been approved by the police chief here in Double Lake.
Right, and we did get approval, like Sam here works for us part-time, and he, his hours would allow him to go to the last training, so he did.
What class are you talking about, because I'm not aware of this?
Online, I went to.
We talked to Cory about it.
Cory made an error.
Okay, cause it was, I had a certification, so it's.
And I'm not saying he didn't get certified.
It was through the.
Cory spoke himself.
Through the North Dakota State Council.
Yep, but we, we had agreed, and Cory gave him a spoke, the first time somebody takes that class, we would like to take the full three and a half hour class that is offered for free, you get a lot more out of it, you've got a lot more.
Well, and Sam went through the police officer's course, so he's probably more trained than, I mean, he's.
That's why, yeah, but I'm. I'm saying for the general person, we had agreed through Chief Tanowski that the first course would be in-person and take the full three and a half hour course. You just get a lot more out of it, it's a lot more expensive, you talk more about checking IDs, you actually look at IDs, you talk to other people in the area who weren't going to be trained too, are big shoes, and then, and then as you brought up, you know, let's talk about what happens if somebody's overserved, somebody surprises, Officer Gilbertson goes into an hour, hour and a half just on that, how do you diffuse the situation? How do you make it comfortable for everybody there and say to the guy, hey, why don't we have a coke, and maybe I'll get you a sandwich? When you see that person's starting to do, these are tools that those people can take and work with them every day. I'm not saying the online program isn't a good one, I'm saying the in-person first time, this is new to everybody, you really are going to get the tools you need to do your job effectively, that's why we do it for free.
That, that's something that's, could be discussed, so many of the time, we're discussing the, the ordinance right now.
So my only concern with the ordinance, if, you know, is, and would be then with the timing, some people do have full-time jobs, and I know that they're trying to offer the course, but, you know, it was offered in August, and that will be offered again in October, and, you know, a lot of our employees, this is their second job. I mean, we have forty-two employees that are trained.
Yeah.
So, and between the two places, so, I mean, we've done our, we're trying, doing our due diligence to get everyone there, but there are circumstances.
What are you trying to say here, at least John Flores is at six at night, at eight-thirty in the morning, at one-thirty in the afternoon, we'll go back and do them at six at night again. I think, you know, we're very common that.
And I understand that, I'm not saying that, it was, what I'm saying is, Sam maybe wasn't working for us when they did the six o'clock class, and so the next class was during the day, and he's going to fall within his seventy-five days.
Sure.
If he doesn't do something. So that's our only issue, if it was offered once a month or twice a month, it'd be different, and I know there isn't enough need for that often.
And what, what, what do you think would be a reasonable time?
I think seventy-five is, is, I mean, it's okay, I mean, we're trying. You know, you know, by then, you know if an employee is going to last, because it's not everyone's cup of tea, so, you know, if they, for a couple weeks, you know they're not going to work out.
So essentially, you're making the, making the point that seventy-five days, we shouldn't go less than.
No, but to make an exception, if someone can't get there because of their job, and it's not going to fall in that, or what do you?
Can't make an exception. I mean, this has come up with another law, I mean, the law was written to be a law, and we're trying to accommodate everybody every time we do a class, and I know that you've been very supportive of it, Louise, as best as we can in the timeframes that we can. You know, it is, but we've, we've now trained almost three hundred people here in the Double Lake area. That's pretty darn impressive compared to.
Well, our vendors.
Well, so, so everybody.
And there's turnover, and there are college kids that come, they become a baby, so they got to get trained in the summer, but we've got, you know, we've got this, we were actually the featured server training program, the governor's recovery reinvented program in, in, in Bismarck. We were, we were one of two feature programs in the entire state, showing how to run it and how to do it well. It's because of people like Louise, and, and they, they get it, and they do it. Unfortunately, with the amount of people we're training, you know, somebody might be, you know, a secretary or, or whatever, a kid in college, we can't make every shoe fit every se, you know, every time, we try as best we can, you know.
Where, what do you want us to do here? Spend the seventy-five days?
You know, we've suggested more trainers, you know, and, and we've talked to them before about even like our Grady getting trained, and he's been through the police academy also, he was a officer for a while, and, you know, for getting, just to have another option, so if you have.
More trainers.
A need for, okay, you have X amount of people that can't make it to a daytime, and it's going to, you're going to run out of time, then you have another option.
But remember that we also are paying for this, out of our grant, and, you know, there, there, there's a budget, you know, that we.
We're providing a service here, the local community.
Right.
And that's what we're supposed to do, provide a service.
Exactly.
So we're providing the service because the governor gave us a grant and said there's a need for this, and we, we have.
And like I said, we're not arguing that at all, I mean, we, we support it, we have our employees, I mean, we have our county employees out of Pro's Lakeside, so, they've been trained our full time, ones have been trained since two thousand sixteen, so, way before it was ever made.
Makes perfect sense, right?
So we're not, but it, we're just, you know, to follow the law and be in the guideline, there's situations. there's situations where it's not working out sometimes with.
From, from our perspective, we just wanted it to match what the city's doing.
Right.
So that way, it's not confusing, especially for a business like yours.
Right.
Yeah, it, it sounds to me like, oh, I'll, no, I was just gonna say, it sounds to me like we're talking about two different things, not two different things, but two aspects of the same thing, just, the seventy-five days isn't necessarily a problem, but if it is, then we have to adjust maybe additional trainers, additional trainings, that kind of thing, and that can be worked out through the public health unit, so hopefully we can get maybe another training or something like that.
We talked about that today.
Yeah, yeah, and, and, and I think, I guess, I'm speaking for myself, I can't speak for the whole commission, but if, if we want this to work, I think we would be more than supportive of helping out from the commission level or whatever it's gonna take, to make sure we get more additional trainings, to get everybody trained.
We thought about this, I mean, God forbid, you know, what if Cory got sick, what if Cory got hurt?
Yeah.
You know, you don't ever leave yourself with one guy.
Yeah.
Or.
That's where we're going to live, to provide services.
Yeah, and then.
And it costs us a little more money, so we, but we're gonna provide that service.
I'm the one who's fighting for this, we're trying.
Said, it's a good program, we're gonna take care of it.
Yeah, and, and we's taking care of it.
And I think that's why, yeah, that's why we're supportive of, of doing what we're doing, it's just a matter of if we could get more, more personnel trained to do it, then we could hopefully maybe hold, you know, once every other month, whatever.
You know, Cory, Cory has gone through the entire train-the-trainer program, we sent him ourselves, we paid for it, he could easily train another officer.
That's good, and we can solve it, probably by training some other people.
I think we have to solve it.
God.
Sounds like a solution, I like.
How many more, do you need more days than seventy-five? No.
I, I think seventy, you know.
Is that in here?
I think seventy, it's not, but.
It's not, we have the motion to put in more.
I think seventy-five, that's what the city has done, and, and it's worked, worked fine, it's just, it, there's some situations where someone just can't.
Well, this is a program that's involving the city and the county now, and evidently we're gonna need more trainers, and we're gonna need more spots, we're gonna need more days to get this done probably, you know, everybody's working this deal part-time, other than probably the, the guy that's teaching the class, is he part-time too? Cory?
He's a full-time police officer.
Okay, this is a part-time deal for him too then.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, he can only make it so many days.
And accommodate them, he can go on my ass for working nights and do another five-hour class.
Yeah, let's get another trainer.
Well, yeah, we had.
Educated.
Totally agree.
And we had talked about this, I recall, when we, when we started talking about opening this about with Sheriff Nelson, having one of his deputies get trained, so we would have buy-in from our side as well to give more options.
And again, Cory can do that very easily.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, and that's the solution, if, if we wanna go with the seventy-five days, we're gonna have to make sure that we offer enough classes to make, it's, it's, it's on us if we're gonna put a certain day limit in there to make sure that you guys have the opportunity to train.
Oh, we're never gonna leave anybody short when they're gonna say they've gone seventy-five days, and they didn't get trained.
Yeah, it's, I'm just saying, we, we have to.
It's never happened.
If we're asking this essentially as a mandate, then we have to provide the service.
Absolutely.
And, and, and the company from our aspect, we need to provide some of our staff.
Absolutely. Louise, is seventy-five days long enough, or do you need a hundred?
Seventy-five is long enough if we, you know, if, we can maybe.
You can get your people in, get this back.
I mean, we need to, you know, so they did a, a nine AM and a one-thirty and a night, or by whichever order that was in, well, there, you know, so that was two in a row, and they're offered about every two to three months, if there's two daytime and someone is an eight-to-five person, you know, they shouldn't have to take vacation from their other job to, you know, so, to offer maybe every other one a night and day.
Money's tight enough where I did, you don't want money to buy it.
And I know we work around Officer Gilbertson's schedule, so that's why summer nights, summer days, and, you know.
That's why it's very important, make sure to have somebody else.
Somebody stretches off the nine days.
And we could rotate.
Would that make it happen better?
I, you know, the city's at seventy-five, I'm fine with seventy-five, as long as the trainings are maybe.
Let's just get another trainer involved, though.
Even at daytime.
Yeah, so, I guess my, not solution, so it's be, Jeff, you're on sheriff's, right? Would you talk with Sheriff Nelson, and then obviously I'm sure Liz will too, and we can coordinate, hopefully getting one of our staff trained, so that we can provide, and like you said, flipping night and day, and then they can work together and make it happen, and maybe we can get more than one person trained, so we can make sure that it's.
I think it's probably two or three we should have.
Yeah, and I think that's a reasonable.
Whatever, whoever got trained, been around for the lead.
Okay, so, I think we got that number though. Further discussion on the ordinance, Jeff?
Uh, Liz had talked, mentioned something that sure, uh, Chief Tanowski approves, something?
Well, when we, when we had the program, um, approved by the city, and what it says in there that it's up to the chief's approval was, in their ordinance, it doesn't say, in the city ordinance?
Well, the, the city's in mine, but it doesn't say anything about, about that in ours, that's why the ordinance in ours.
Okay, so, so Kerry Borkoff, the city ordinance, I don't know if that's.
Well, it said, it says all certificates issued by Lake Region District Health Unit or assigned providers, and I'm not sure who that, you know, if they have assigned.
If you guys would like to say Sheriff's Department, if we're now gonna get them trained.
All, all Kerry Borkoff did that detail with Kerry, maybe?
Let me tell you the reasoning behind this, we don't want three hundred people who've taken the course, have taken it, three hundred different courses anywhere online, you can just find a place and take a course, we're trying to keep the people in this community trained the same way, so if they move from bar to bar in the community, they know that the rules are all the same, and this is the one course that we found, this is the state-approved course, that really goes from A to Z with complete training in about three-and-a-half hours.
I still have that question about, so if someone moved here from Fargo or Grantport, so they have a state-approved certification, will that be honored?
Does that certification cover everything that we want covered, we don't know that.
I understand what your question is, um, I think I'm gonna relook at the city ordinance and make sure that that was something that was in there, and then visit the sheriff and all of it, and the commission.
I think it was addressed in the city, um, that it would be, and it was if someone had taken an approved.
Well, I think that was the whole.
Cause that was brought up there too.
Because people move, you know, and some, some trainings better than none, a lot of kind of things.
Well, I, just a, just a thought, um, for you guys, I mean, when you talk about the money spent on this and whatnot, and she mentioned that you don't know what this training third class was.
North Dakota's a big state, but it's full of little counties, you know, it's, it's just a thought, but counties are not very far away for those people who wanna get classes and whatnot, it'd be possible to review other counties' practices on this, so that then you could say, maybe Ramsey County agree with Nelson County's tactics of training and this and that. Hey, you're taking something so, such a small county and individualizing it into something that, um, you know, where, that, that, just as Emily told her, one, one bartender, just went through this two months ago on this town, and I don't know if it's been our works, but I'm into both of them, but it, it's just a thought even to leave you two guys aside, if there was other surrounding counties that maybe do provide a very similar thing, um, you know, Lakota already isn't Ramsey County, but, you know, Ramsey County has a small circle, a lot of people are willing to drive fifteen miles for a job, they have the certification there, need to re-kick it here, maybe these other counties are just good classes that can.
Let me, I just wanna throw one, one, one other caveat in here, to get the approval over the city of Devil's Lake, um, we, Lake Region District Health Unit has taken the responsibility of doing all the compliance checks and making sure, we have, we have a constant list of everybody who's taken this ca, this class so far, the date they took it, the day they, they're gonna be up for renewal, everybody from every bar has been set up, so, if somebody, if Louise hires somebody and we don't know about it, that's not in our database now, we don't, so, is there a responsibility for them to report to us, that class and that training? I mean, we want to have some, if we're gonna be responsible for handling, uh, the, what's the word I'm looking for here, um, to maintain that they're in compliance, in compliance checks, we have to know who these people are, if they've been trained, cause we are gonna start coming into businesses and saying, do you have your card?
And that's where we are required to have a list at our business of current employees, so like, this is in town, and then this is my list of who's been certified, so.
I mean, I guess as far as, as far as I'm concerned, the most important thing to me is that whatever our requirements for training at the county level are identical, or whatever the requirements for training are at the city level, because you're gonna have the most common overflow of servers from in the county to in the city, vice versa, and if that's true, then whatever the, whatever the standard is that the city wants people trained to, certainly doesn't make sense, for at least my perspective, to have entirely different set of standards at the county level.
Who's talking, like, we got a change up there? Well, I really haven't a standing, Liz.
Well, no, the, the, the point that I'm trying to say is, is, you know, that apparently there are many different types of alcohol server training, right, so it's, but what I'm saying is, if, if some, if, if a version of alcohol server training is acceptable to the city, then I think it should be acceptable to the county, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And within the city, it, it's either up to us or Tanowski, or he, it comes down to Chief Tanowski, says I'll approve that or I won't.
Yeah, and I don't think it's unreasonable to say that, you know, if there's, if there's another class out there that's as good as, and it covers all the areas that we feel it covers and it's on set, that we would honor that class, but that would be a one-on-one case basis and, and, and pre-approved by, by the chief or, or by the district health unit, or, I mean, I guess we would have teeth in here to let Sheriff Nelson, obviously, put, we'll throw in his two cents at the same time, but I. I mean, what we have in the, in the ordinance, it allows for that ability right now, it's just a matter of how we're going to, you know, make it work as we enact it, I think that's something that's, that's something.
I mean, here's the bottom line to my opinion, we had a hundred and four DUI arrests here last year in Ramsey County, forty-nine of them were three times over the legal limit, thirty-two of them were two times over the legal limit, people have to get proper training, but that's not gonna change, that's all I'm requesting, I don't care how, what program, but we need to, I think it needs to be, it is in Devil's Lake, Chief Tanowski has to say, yes, I checked in that program, thumbs up.
He makes a determination that this class is already acceptable, is that right?
Again, to decide which one.
Well, we can have Sheriff Nelson do it for the count.
Absolutely, absolutely.
And you can, and I'm sure, I mean, chief will coordinate and they'll work with Officer Gilbertson to make sure that everything.
Yeah, we're all saying the same thing, I think, is we just want people to be completely and properly trained.
And like you, like you were saying, that at the city meetings also, not all of those DUIs came from bars.
Absolutely not, I totally agree with you.
Many of them come from their homes, or from a friend's home, so.
But, but on the other hand, those are the only ones we caught.
Probably.
So, and I'm not saying they all came from bars, I think the picture is, we know this in the state of North Dakota, we got number one state in the country for binge drinking and underage drinking, we have a problem, so, this may be a part of it, at least, trying to keep people safer and, you know, and, and give these bartenders the tools they have to keep not only that guy who's drinking, but the family of four down the road who just went to McDonald's for dinner, and maybe gets headshot on by a drunk driver.
Um, if I can throw in what you, it's just something that I mentioned to Lucas, um, I had talked to her, and she mentioned this hundred and four, and, you know, when they do the math and I, and you take a five-year average, and you divide that by the population, I mean, we're talking about somewhere around five percent of the population here has received a DUI in the last five years, which is an alarming number, something that I have seen is somebody operating a bar, I believe, in this city, um, and in North Dakota also in general, is, I think that there's a lot bigger transportation problem than there is a drinking problem, we went through, how many, how many months did we go through this with no taxi service?
That's, that's a huge issue.
And then, and then we went, and then we went through major months, we went, I mean, the thing is, in the wintertime, if you're dealing with an individual, and, and he's, and he's full, and he needs to go, and if he's a problem, and you can't have a taxi answer the phone, you have three choices, you know, one, call the cops, B, leave him in zone, or C, haul him home, and I'd actually just shared with Lucas, I took the choice to haul a guy home, and I held him home to a reservation, and I had been through death threats and being told that I was gonna be killed and left on the reservation, and I told myself, I'm really glad I took this drive and not my wife, yeah, I, I really bet it, but I think I would've probably froze to death on that side, and I, I really think, I mean, I think that the one who does tax the old company's been a little better job, but we as people, we talked about it twice, the, you know, point one-six, it's so, everybody acts different, and it's hard to tell these things, but the most important part about this is, is trying to find a way to get these people home safe and having a resolution for that, and trying to have a way, what, I mean, I don't even know if it's worth it in the city, somehow just, some way to get these people homes, when, when it's not there, if we go through some nights, you wait three hours for a taxi to answer the damn phone, it, it just doesn't happen, and if these guys are right now, in the summertime, what do they do, they'll stand outside and, either they'll sit there, or they'll, in the wintertime, you're either gonna drive or you're gonna please, that's what's gonna happen, and this, that's the scary part for me, when I look at it, that's, that's what I see, I don't see a drinking problem, I see a transportation problem here, a lot.
Okay, good comment. Okay, any further comments specific to the ordinance? Okay, seeing none, um, we have to approve first reading with changes, or do we have to handle this? I should actually ask the attorney.
Sorry, I was looking at the.
No, that's okay, do we have to appro, approve first reading with changes then, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so, at this point in time, I guess, after all this discussion, the main change would be, and we can still make changes at the second hearing, but the main, the main thing would be just adding in, adding in a, uh, the, the dates, whatever.
Seventy-five days, remove the number three of the, of the fees?
Did we decide one?
Yeah, my only question on the number three, and a stupid question, Liz, you're saying right now we're working under a grant, correct? When does that grant run out?
It's already run out, but the money, the money, we don't have, it's sitting.
We still have money to do the trainings, but at some point in time, that money will run out, and then we're gonna have to find a way to pay for it.
And I have, I have grants over.
Other grants are working, okay, I, I think it's still reasonable.
I'm not uncomfortable saying we can, hopefully the mission will do that, the state will do the statewide, and it won't even be our problem, but, for now, what I'm saying is, we, we will have, we do have to build, we continue to provide this class for free.
Well, if you feel confident in that, then I guess we can agree with, that's fine with that.
Okay, okay, well then I guess, at that point, we have the two changes.
Another option you could consider is, if necessary.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda what I was.
Change it later.
Yeah, I'll put that in there, really do it.
That way we can leave it, you know, that way we don't have to open up the ordinance completely to make a two-word change later.
It's too expensive without the, the.
No, we'll, we'll deal with that as it comes, okay? Uh, so I guess then, as, as a.
Okay, and are we reviewing section fourteen, is that also the, and the time?
We'll review, uh, and I, I, that's what I was showing here, is I, I, the minutes from that December sixteen meeting, it, it looks to me like it indicates that what's written here isn't what was intended, it, it didn't get changed correctly, and it got missed when it was signed, I think, uh, but we have to look at it, and luckily, we record everything, so, we'll be able to go back and take a look at it, make sure we got everything right, and if not, we can work on it, but then that's. Okay, um, then I guess I would have to entertain a motion to make that change to go to seventy-five days at the words if necessary, and then take section fourteen under advisement, correct?
And I think the other thing you had spoken about was to.
Oh, and we're good.
Some authority for the sheriff to, to someone who can approve based on the.
Okay, okay, so put the sheriff in, would be in the motion as well, as well as it sounds like everyone is kind of in favor of just removing section A completely then, correct? Does anybody feel like making a motion?
I'm old, sir.
We have a second, through the discussion, on a motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign, motion carries, thank you everyone, appreciate all the input. Okay, let's see where I'm at here.
The second, we need the second.
The second.
Okay, yeah, we'll make a motion. Okay, uh, what, what would we like to set for second hearing, or second reading of the, of the ordinance, if you had our next meeting, correct?
See, we have the next meeting.
Okay, we have a motion in the second to hold the second reading.
But personally, we would pull.
I personally agree with Paul.
But that one will be till Thursday. The first meeting in November will be until Thursday.
Yeah, but it's still, the first meeting is usually on Paul.
Well, I mean, it sounds to me like we had pretty good inputs, so the changes are going to be pretty much fairly straightforward, other than the section fourteen.
Go ahead.
Okay. That will allow Candy to set, so we have a motion in a second to approve, uh, holding a second reading of the ordinance, the first meeting in November, which will be Thursday. Okay. Further discussion on the motion. So, if that was the.
Well, I mean, that way people couldn't attend at the evening, like, if we kind of, so we try to break up.
Okay. Further discussion, seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay. Yes, it's going to be Thursday, November eighth, and it'll be probably like eight-thirty is usually, eight-thirty or nine o'clock in the morning is when we will hold it.
We'll stay nine.
I won't be here. I'll be sitting in the hospital.
I'll get you in quick, don't worry. We got you. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you guys very much.
Okay. I gotta get back to my line here. Okay, we did six. Now we're down to, okay. All right, approval of notice of intent to evict, and that's sitting on your desk, there's, there's one, one property. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve the notice of intent to evict with the sale, the second reading of November. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries. Okay, discussion on the LEC, and Rob is here and obviously we were all at the meeting last night, so we kind of, we saw all the city, well, not just the city, but we all kind of agreed to handle the situation. Do you have anything you'd like to, to add, Rob?
Nothing really specific to the conversation from last night. I just figured I'd be here to answer any questions out there might be. I could provide a little bit of updated information as far as, you know, what we were able to find today, uh, with the assistance of Sheriff Nelson. He made some phone calls specifically looking for grant opportunities. Uh, the Department of Commerce does not have any money available. The USDA, they have money available, but it's under the fifty thousand dollars, which is what we actually got for our front entrance, that we're going to be redoing our front entrance to make it handicap accessible, so we've already tapped into that money. Uh, there may be an opportunity regionally to go to a, uh, the regional rep for the USDA where they might have funds available for something on a project like this. Only thing is that it's probably going to require, would have required involvement prior to where we're at in the process. So we may not be eligible on that aspect either. So we're continuing to look at those, as, at those options. Uh, one of the things that Commissioner Brown just shared as far as on the bill, uh, from car engineering, it does indicate on there that it does cover through the construction of the project. We, we did look through the, the contract again today and couldn't find any real, uh, verbiage in there specific to anything regarding that. So I did reach back out to Tom Trainer, who we, who we had reviewed the contract before it was executed and see if there's anything we needed to have done, just to get his input on if we need to do, you know, a request for clarification, a request for modification, or if there's anything we need to do specific to the contract, uh, with the engineers. But that's, I mean, you know, I still, um, it's obviously, I think everyone's well aware of the need for the project, that it's something they need to do. Uh, I don't believe that kind of corners is the way to go with this project. I think that that's something we've seen historically happen through the LEC and, and I won't blame you. So I support the, that it's going to happen and I have no doubt that it's going to happen. I'm a little concerned in regards to the LEC taking on a portion of the responsibility right now just because of our financial situation and that this isn't just the only project that we're going to have to deal with. Uh, that we need to be, oh, there are other things that are going to be pressing that we're going to have to take care of and I, I believe that this may, uh, push the, those types of things off and we may end up having to look the other way a little bit longer or try to patch things together as we move forward. But, uh, I, one of the things that we're going to do is we're going to develop two five-year plans for the facility. We're going to come up with a, a five-year plan based off of ten years of usage for the facility and a five-year plan based off of twenty or more years of usage of the facility to really show our board and then the commissions as far as what we identify as being the big obstacles that we have to overcome within the facility itself and kind of what the expenses will be with those, so. I, that's, you know, I, I appreciate the support that the county's shown through this whole thing, you know, you guys have understood and kind of had our, you know, had our backing and support through the whole process, uh, and I do appreciate that, but, you know, it's. And, you know, we'll see how the meeting goes tomorrow morning, uh, in regards to the other agencies and taking on their share of it, so I, I, I expect that it's going to go okay. I hope.
It works a lot, just to me.
Pardon me, no. No, they can be fine. It'll work with them and they're understanding and they're good guys, you know, but like I said earlier yesterday, I only deal with one commissioner from each county, but I know, like, all the rest of them and so, but I think we'll be all right.
And even through the conversations with going to the cost share formula versus the mill, you know, Toner County was the one that really pushed that. And, and one of the discussions that I had up there was that, you know, we have this project coming and they felt that they should pay a portion of it, that, that, you know, they have a responsibility in that as well. So that's where I think, you know.
Should be an easy deal then.
Well.
Well, I had to share last night with me that, that he said that he talked to Fisher McGee and, you know.
Yeah, he didn't have any hesitance. He realized that they're getting a pretty good deal, I think, and that, that it's reasonable that they should have to pay some part of the share because they don't intend on going anywhere for the near future. So why wouldn't they have to share at least a little bit of it, you know, even though we don't live in the building, you know, whether it's through increased incarceration costs or just a share of the project.
Right. In the meetings we've had over the years, there have never been any contentious meetings, I didn't feel, you know, I thought they were quite well, you know. We're all on the same page at the.
I think it's helped a lot in the last two months as we, you know, drew out the cost of nine-one-one and explained it to these other counties.
Really?
Rob did a wonderful job doing that and, you know, I think that's where they, they were very confused that, you know, oh, we can go anywhere. Well, when you get shown on paper in black and white, no, you can't. You lock, you lock out, now you leave with nine-one-one and everything else goes with it. And you can bet that maybe not going to be so cooperative coming back, you know, because you're, they're getting it for nothing.
They quickly realize you're getting a pretty good deal.
They're getting a huge deal.
And, and Benson County was one that I think really got their eyes opened up.
One, yeah.
I sit next to Stefan and, and I knew he was circling his account on there, what, you know, their call numbers and, and on their percentage of what they're using nine-one-one and it's, uh, a lot, you know, but, uh.
And there's a huge lump that's not even in common, you know, the cell phone, we still, the, the cell phone stuff is so fuzzy, nobody understands, you know, are, are we getting our money for it or are we not getting our money?
Well, you mean, you mean on the payments.
Yeah, are we getting, hey, every phone, yeah, well, no, there's a whole way. But all we just asked, we did, these ones are come with a different area code.
Well, I just have, uh, yeah, to get back to the, to the, the payment portion of it, I just had the one question. So, to make sure I have an understanding of this, how are we, how are we structuring the payment schedule? Is it going to be an overall loan? Is it going to be we throw in our money, the city throws in their money and the remainder is the loan, just so I have clarity?
I would have been advertising for a.
That would have been my understanding was that the city was going to pay their two-seventy-five, the county would do their two-seventy-five, and we were borrowing the two-sixty-one.
So you guys will advertise for the two-sixty-one and get whatever loan you need separately as a board and that decision will be made at that board level? Then here we have the decision to make if we want to pay the two-seventy-five total or we can advertise for our own loan for that portion if we feel that's how we want to do it then.
Yeah, that was my understanding.
Okay, that's, I just, that was, I thought, but it, there was enough stuff flying around.
Right, right.
It got a little confusing there for a while.
And, and one thing that I, you know, in thinking of it last night and then again today that got overlooked a little bit is going to be the exigent circumstances or the, uh, not exigent circumstances, but, uh, in the terms going to escape me, as far as if there's additional fees that come up through the project.
Change order.
Yeah, change order, stuff like that to where I know that, uh, roughly fifty thousand would be something that we would be looking at trying to have for that. And, and with the way the discussion went, I would expect that that fifty thousand, if needed, would come on just out of LEC general fund. So I don't, you know, because we don't have that built in, the city obviously made the loan pretty static as far as what they would support on the loan on the LEC side by, you know, identifying the dollar amount that they would guarantee on a loan, so we can incorporate that into a loan. We would have to just base, if there was that need, it would have to come out of the LEC general fund. Yeah, I agree.
Well, at the end of the day, that's going to, that's going to just, that's going to show up as, as costs, uh, additional dollars to the bottom line on that three-ninety and it's going to get split out equally to everybody off of usage. So we'll have, we'll share a majority of the burden, but I guess we'll cross that bridge when we get through it.
Uh, and that would be another question that I would have before our board meeting tomorrow, maybe Mark and Ed would be able to bring this up as well. Because there was discussion to where that remaining two-sixty-one would then possibly just be paid for by the four counties and that Ramsey and the city won't pay a share of that. So, you know, I don't, because they're already putting in the two-seventy-five. Because I know that comment was made last night, so I don't know what direction is, is necessarily one.
I don't believe we should go that way, I think.
Because.
It's the way we're talking about it.
But one thing too to look at too is if you do it the way that we're talking about in that two-six, the two-sixty-one we're taking, Ramsey's going to have to have a sixty-two percent cut, cut of that, which is you're actually going to pay more than the four-eleven in the long run then.
Yes.
So I, there, it needs to be talked about, I think. It needs to be discussed, so.
The thing like I talked about yesterday, we're past the budget cycle, you know, and them other four counties have no ability to put this in their budget, you know, and, and, you know, I just don't think we should do that at this time. You know, and we should go ahead and keep it as clean as we can and keep it down with the county and the city. Like I always said, I'm not willing to give up ownership of that building above and above Commissioner. I won't. And I don't want to give it to any other counties and I don't believe they should be, you know, strapped for the upkeep of it. I mean, I think it's the county, Ramsey County and the city. But, uh, you know, we can deal with that in the future when the next budget cycle comes around and give them an opportunity, like I talked yesterday, membership fee. We're not going to talk mill anymore. We're going to talk a membership fee. If they want to belong to, like the mayor said, a class one jail, you know, there's no restrictions on this jail, the disclosure of this lifted. And there's going to be a membership fee. And what that's going to be, we'll have to determine down the road. And I think we'll take input from the other counties and let the LEC come up with a conclusion on how much these membership fees should be. Uh, I, I just think that's, and then we can take part of that once we get this project done and put it into a fund. In the future, five years, ten years down the road, there's a lot of money that is, pick something that we need to fix it. Two, three, four hundred thousand, the money's there. Ever since I've been on the board, there's been no money to fix anything. The only thing we can do is take it right out of the general and the law enforcement account, you know, and the state will not let you drop that down to what? Three, four hundred thousand, about where we're at.
Well, we figure that our bottom line balance that we need to have, uh, for liability reasons is about two, two-fifties are very bottom, very bottom. Yeah, we want to be in that two-seventy range at least.
And another thing I thought of the last day is that when we advertise or when the law enforcement center board, I'm talking to me again, the law enforcement center, when we advertise, we should put in there that this loan will be guaranteed by the city of Devil's Lake and Ramsey County.
Correct.
And that will give us a better interest rate.
Yeah, and I think that's what the motion we made last night was essentially, we'll cover our share and then we'll, we'll, we'll guarantee the other half of the portion of the remainder just so it's backed up in case something were to happen.
When they advertise for their share, that, you know, that they put in their advertisement that it's guaranteed by the city of Devil's Lake and Ramsey County also. I mean, we, we're not going to walk away from it. We can't. They're a public entity, just like we are. They're just an extension of us is what they are, the law enforcement center.
We, we would need a motion.
We need to put that in the motion, I think, too, that's what I think we should do.
Rob, when were you first aware of the cost overage on this project?
Uh, when, so we had a, the contractor walk through what had been the third Wednesday of October. I don't remember what day it was specifically. That afternoon, it was after our board meeting and as I, the only ones that showed up were Accurate Controls and Bergstrom. No one else showed up. So as we were walking through with them, the conversations that they were having and even at the end of it to where it's like, well, we're really glad we came and took a look at this place and really got an understanding for what the project was going to entail. At that point, I knew that the, the bid was going to come in high. I didn't know to what extent until, you know, then Jason contacted me the night, the day before the bid opening and said, yeah, we're expecting that the bid's going to come in fairly high.
Well, timing is everything. Three, three months ago, we wouldn't be having this conversation. We would have added that additional cost into our budget. Okay, you know, um.
As you say, timing's everything.
Yeah.
We just have to deal with it. And like we talked yesterday about the search and rescue building and all something of that, and, you know, you two guys were, but, I mean, it was relatively simple to do and it's worked out very well. I mean, the search and rescue people, I mean, they've got a great facility and they're very, very appreciative of it, you know, they just, it's a service that we need in this community. I mean, we just need to have it with this lake out here and we just gotta have it. I mean, and they do a good job. I'm glad we did it and it won't be much more suffering and we'll have it paid for. But this is something we just need to do and I think all the commission I'm preaching in the fire department, I mean, we all have to.
The only thing I would make a note on is, is if, if we pay two-seventy-five, the city pays two-seventy-five, then the two-sixty-one goes to the LEC and is split up off of usage. It's going to end up making us four, we're going to be at four-thirty-eight when this is all said and done, and the city's only going to be at three-oh-six and we're a fifty-fifty building.
I mean, that, that to me seems like stuff that's going to have to be negotiated at the LEC board level, right? How, how that's going to pay back that loan, isn't it?
Yeah, but we still have to have someone, you know, give insight to our two members that are sitting there. I mean, obviously we empower you to make the decision at the, at the time, but at least have someone go from us so you know what's, we're, kind of, we're thinking.
I, I trust that our appointed representatives will try to cut the best deal they can for Ramsey.
Yeah, chase some money out of his pockets and.
Yeah.
Let him cover the difference.
Put it upside down and then get much.
No, I'm just, I'm just coming from the aspect of if, you know, because like, for instance, I guess I look at it this way. I know Benson County, for instance, doesn't own the facility. So they can't be expected to have the share of us or, or Devil's Lake. But they use the facility just about as much as Devil's Lake does, probably more when it comes down to, they're using nine-one-one more. And their mandates is very, within a hundred mandates. I mean, it's very similar. Devil's Lake's going to, at this rate, if we did that, the two, if Devil's Lake would pay two-sixty-one, Benson would have to pay one-twenty-three, which is half the rate of Devil's Lake to get to keep the facility and they're going nowhere. I don't think it's an unreasonable ask to take that two-sixty-one and split it out amongst the other four counties.
That'd be the way that I'd do it.
I'm just saying that, that's my opinion. Now, I, I empower you. You guys are going to do what you need to do to get it done, but I'm just saying that's kind of where I'm at on it.
I, I agree with that. At least, at least try.
Like I talked earlier, that's why I went back to the membership fees, you know, like I said, I can't go over there and say, well, you got to come up with sixty grand this year. I'm going, a small county can't do it. I mean, they can give it into their general and, you know, very.
No, but, but.
But I mean, in the future, we can, I think the membership fee will take care of the two-sixty-one.
Want to do it all in the first year either.
No, we're not going to do it. That's why we're setting it up.
Right.
Five years, is that what we're shooting for on a note, five years?
Yeah, if you put it up over five years, then Benson County would probably have twenty-five to thirty thousand to pay next year. I think Toner, I figure it was about eighty, so they would have fifteen and change. And I mean, that would be, I think that's a reasonable approach to say dip into your general and cover that, huh?
Yes, I agree with that.
So that's just where I'm at. So anyway, if I have a discussion on it, we kind of all know where we're going instead of preaching to the choir. So if somebody wants to make a motion and word it correctly.
Well, I, I might help you, but I don't really want to make a motion.
I'll, I'll make the motion and just make sure that I'm saying it correctly, so please amend me if I'm wrong. Uh, I make the motion that Ramsey County, uh, provide for the budgeted two-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars to, uh, fund the improvements to the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center and to guarantee, uh, a note to be taken by the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center, uh, not to exceed, so we're identical to the city, not to exceed a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, is that right?
One-thirty-six.
One-thirty-three, one-thirty, one-thirty plus change.
One-thirty, one-hundred-and-thirty thousand, six-hundred-and-sixty dollars, I think is what it is.
Yeah, you were close.
Two-sixty-one.
And, 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 and then also you, you want to put in that motion to also make sure that it's advertised with, that we're guaranteeing the loan.
That Ramsey and the city have a note like.
Or the bid packets, whatever you're going to send out.
Sure.
I know what's happening here, but just to make sure.
You should have that in motion to, if that's the way you're going to advocate, then it should be in motion.
Okay, so that is the motion. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second.
Thank you.
Motion in a second that we'll pay two-se, pay our share of two-seventy-five and then we will guarantee the other portion, one-half of the remaining two-sixty-one to finish the project. Or one-thirty-six, sixty, as well as having it advertised that we're guaranteeing that portion of the loan. Further discussion. Seeing none, we will roll call, please.
Brown.
Hi.
Olson.
Hi.
Tripp.
Hi.
Wakefield.
Hi.
Lightfoot.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, then, Mark?
Yeah, I'm going with it.
Okay, anything else, Rob?
No, that's all I got.
Thank you for, uh, helping us through this process. Visitors and delegations. Nobody were fantastic. Nobody, fantastic. Announce, Vince.
I have nothing. You heard everything I had.
I, I announced, but I'd like to return.
Okay, I'm just gonna make one, one, no, I won't make it long. Huh? I'll make it short. Uh, just to make mention, I don't know how you guys know about the F-five project. They have the house, and it's for guys coming out of prison, having a place to live. The house is full. So, that's fantastic. And they now started a jail meeting where they're doing work in the jail to help identify people to work through that, their system, so that we can give people a place to live and hopefully decrease the civism, so. And that's all a nonprofit, it's all privately funded, so it's fantastic, and Rob's been working with them, and it's...
But now, actually, Lieutenant, this is Lieutenant Shively. Uh, he was actually working with F-five to set up those jail meetings and stuff.
Awesome. And I appreciate that. I've had, I've got to work with them a little bit. I haven't been able to get to the meetings as much as I would.
So, Adam was actually here today.
Yeah, yeah, so that's awesome.
You guys have done a great job, though, taking charge of them. Absolutely.
Anything we can do to try to help guys not come back?
Well, we have a program now that we're offering females as well, uh, through SAFE, and they have that through a grant that they received. It's called Within My Reach. And what that does is, uh, helps teach them better boundaries when dealing with, uh, uh, relationships, not just sexual, like, mother, father, you know, uh, sister, brother, that kind of thing. What it does is it tries to make them realize that when they get out, they're not just gonna go right back to the arms of the boyfriend that beat them and got them into that, you know? Not saying that it's always the boyfriend's fault, but that, that they're not gonna live that life. And we've got a lot, at least three so far, that have gone pretty far in the program. So, SAFE is really excited about that.
Change your circle of friends.
That's, that's exactly one of the things that it teaches, is not to fall victim to that thing.
You guys are doing really important work, and if there's anything we can do at the county level to support you further, we'll give it our best foot forward. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Awesome. Anything else?
Delicate, uh, stuff from the NDACO conference. Uh, some of the, uh, resolutions that we, we approved and passed, there was, I think, eighteen, nineteen of them. There was one old, one of them was farm residency exemption. Uh, it says, "North Dakota has a long, North Dakota and its counties have a long history of public policy support for family farmers, and this association recognizes the importance of agriculture to our state's economy. The statute supporting agriculture through the property tax exemption for farm residencies, however, has become outdated, difficult to administer fairly, and ineffective for more and more farmers. This association urges the introduction of legislation to phase out farm residency exemption while preserving it for retired farming and surviving spouses of retired farmers, and maintain the exemption for all other farm buildings." That was one of interest. The other one that, um, would really pertain to us would be the cost of foreclosed dilapidated properties. Um, and we're looking for, for help on that. You know, a lot of concern about having a state, all of a sudden, say, here's a pile of money, kinda thing, you know? They're not really, uh, conducive for doing that. But if we had an organization or an entity that would, uh, that could go to, and certainly thought Lake Region District Health, that the asbestos and the demolished demolition of these buildings fall under their guidance, um, put the funds in there. Let them have a fund for dilapidated and foreclosed properties to, to...
They wanna get some bills thrown in the legislature. I do.
So...
They haven't put names on the bills yet.
No, no.
Yeah, the farm home exemption, I wasn't in the meeting, but I think you made mention of it. Uh, Senator Cook will be sponsoring that, the phase-out of the exemption.
And then, that other one, we definitely got to do.
That dilapidated and foreclosed farm...
Let's keep track.
That was a good one. That was, I was...
Hope we get somebody vocal on it.
Yeah, yeah.
Absolutely.
You know, we just have to keep track of legislating, you know? After the election, we might want legislators back in again.
Not a bad idea.
See you then.
That's all I had. It's good conversation.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So, move.
All right. My class, we have a motion in a second.
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 Second, we are...